Good evening, and welcome to the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee meeting of November 13th, 2017. Thank you all for coming. It's appreciated. I made it as aware that I could to the public at every single meeting that I've been to, have been at, trying to get people to come and participate, and you can see what we have. So would you please join me? We're going to pledge allegiance to the flag. Before we do that, I'd like to remind everyone this meeting is being recorded. I'll put this in a later day. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all. Again, thank you all for coming. We need to approve the minutes of September 12th, 2017. We're going to make sort of an amendment to those minutes, though.
Okay. Do you want to motion first?
Please.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2017.
I'll second that.
Okay. Discussion. I think the amendment is to read Fred and I had discussed it. We're not co-chairing the meetings. I'm going to chair it. You're going to be vice chair.
That's fine.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yep. Do you need a motion that affect?
I thought that was the original intent.
It was, but it says chair and chair. It says co-chairs.
Okay.
So, just to clean it up, for the sake of what Mac's talking about, we're going to straighten that out.
So, motion to amend the minutes as stated to read chair and vice chair.
Yes.
Second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we need to vote to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2017 as amended.
I will second that.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you. Keep in mind, just for everybody's own thing, the meeting law minutes have changed as of October 6th of this year, and you do not have to be present at a meeting to vote the minutes of the meeting.
Really?
You are voting the document only.
Ah.
Okay. Agreements to date. We're going to let Mac take over in about two seconds. I just want to remind everyone, we have agreed to keep these meetings to an hour and 30 minutes. And I'm going to try to abide by that. It is 6 o'clock. We'll be done at 7:30. That way, everybody can get home and get done what they have to do and can move forward. So, we have a quorum. You gentlemen are rotten.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you both for coming. I know it's a miserable rainy night, and the last time we didn't have a meeting, so anybody watching might be able to see. The reason we didn't have a meeting is we had no power. We had that freak storm that took down trees, and so that's why we didn't meet, if anybody's wondering why we didn't meet on that beautiful evening. So.
Coming in the rain is slightly better than coming in the dark. So, received a while ago, the packet, a document with your agreement with some amendments. And our plan tonight is to start going through it paragraph by paragraph, asking you if you're okay with either what's there or the amended language that we have proposed. Again, this language is based on schooling us eight or nine times with other districts and having Department of Education push back on us and say, well, you need to say this or you don't need to say this or whatever. It doesn't mean it's perfect, and it doesn't mean that you don't have opportunity to have it say what you want it to say. So, we're just using our best experience to give you some more information. Just one housekeeping thing. For some reason, the Department of Education likes us to use shorter versions. So, throughout the document, eventually, we'll change whatever. It says school committee, and we'll just say committee. Anytime it says regional school district, and we'll just say district. Anytime it says mass general laws, we'll just say MGL. And when it says code of mass regulations, we just say CMR. So, for some reason, they like to keep that more succinct. So, our plan is, if it's okay with you, is to go through each section, and we'll find what, any changes that we've made, and ask you to discuss anything you want about that paragraph.
Mac, just for clarity, like those four things that you just said.
Right.
Shall we vote them and get it over with, and as we move through the document, it might speed up the process if we do it on everyone? Or did you have a different plan?
Sure.
I'm just trying to keep it so it's moving.
Yeah. I think if you want to take each paragraph and vote. The other thing that I would mention on all the other times we've done this, even though people voted on individual paragraphs, sometimes you might not like one as well as other people might like it, but at the end, you'll have another opportunity to look at the whole thing and watch. You see everything in context that may change your mind. So, even though you vote on these things individually, our recommendation is that you vote on the whole thing at the end to make sure that you're okay with it.
And keep in mind, everyone that's on the committee, this has to go to the DESE, to the Boards of Selectment, and eventually to town meeting for votes. So, there's going to be a lot of give and take here in the voting process of how we're going to do this.
Yeah. I just make sure that the school committee, your committee is going to vote on something that recommended to the school committee. The school committee will take a vote on it, and whatever they decide, that's what goes to the town. It goes to the selectmen. The selectmen do not have to vote on the language. They just have to agree to put it on the town for how they want it. And then your towns are going to vote on it, and then the commissioner at the end will have to sign off. So, that's the process.
Thank you.
So, yes, so those four things, mass general laws to MGL, regional school district to district, school committee to committee, and code of mass regulations to CMR.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the abbreviations as stated.
Second.
Discussions. Chris?
So, just real quick. So, are we just going to place those in the document, or are you actually going to do a little definition section? How do you run? You're literally just going to place it in the document, or are you contemplating that we're going to have a definition section that kind of spells things out?
If you look at the very first paragraph, it says, "The agreement entered pursuant to Chapter 71 of the General Laws of Massachusetts." And after that, it says, "Here and after referred to as MGL." Each time, the first time that any of those things come up, it will be spelled out there.
So, I'm just leveraging your knowledge. So, it's really just those four. We don't anticipate we're going to have a long list, but we should have like a definition section.
That should do it.
That should do it.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Unanimous.
Okay. So, what we have done here is, anything that we think can or should be crossed out, it's in blue ink with a line through it. Any language that we have inserted is in red. All your current language is in black, either in black or blue that's been crossed out. So, we have taken nothing out of here of your current agreement. So, as we go along, we will update this, and the next time that we meet, you'll see any of the changes that you agreed to tonight will be reflected in the document the next time, and we'll be able to keep building on that as we go along. So, the first, the capital letters there, we just crossed out the expansion of because that has already happened. There will already be a pre-K to 12 region, so we don't need to say the expansion of the district. In the second paragraph, obviously, there will just be a new date whenever this comes to pass, and we added here and after referred to as MGL. Any other comments about that first paragraph? Maybe, Bob, we could do a section at a time.
Yep. I'm good with that. Everybody else?
This is kind of one section as itself, and then we'll get into section one. So, maybe a vote on that much so far?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first two paragraphs of the amended agreement.
I'll second that.
As read.
Yep.
Someone second?
Second.
Discussion.
Sample that out.
All those in favor?
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay. Good. Well, we'll get, see if we can go through all of section one, but we'll take it a paragraph at a time. So, A is the powers and duties and composition. In one, you will see that we have added a line, "The permanent committee shall consist of 10 members," which is what yours says. "Based on the population of the member towns at the time of amending this original agreement, six members will be from Whitman and four members will be from Hanson." So, that's not a change in concept. It's just clarifying that. But it does allow, it sets up the concept that it could change over time. You'd still have 10 school committee members, but there could be some change in that.
By putting inserting based on the population?
Right. Right.
By the school enrollment, is it?
No. It's the town population.
On town.
Yeah.
Really? Not school enrollment?
Right. That's what the law says.
Okay.
It's based on your town's population. Any questions about that? Okay. B, this just, I believe, spells out what your current practice, but it just spells it out a little more definitively than your current regional agreement. I'll give you a minute to read that.
Mac, for the purposes of who may be watching, I hate to have to do it, but could we read it out loud? If you want me to do it, I will. It's fine.
I'd be happy to do that. So, B says, and these are new wording in this proposed wording in the original agreement, "Each member must reside in the town which she or he represents. Each member must be elected consistent with the process for the election of town officials in said town, and will be elected to open seats during the annual elections in said town. Each member will serve a three-year term with the terms staggered so that at least one member representing each member town will be elected each year. The term of each elected member will begin on the first business day after his or her election and after being sworn in by the respective town clerk. A member who has not otherwise vacated his or her seat will continue to serve until his or her successor is elected and sworn." Any questions about that?
I have a question on it. Say, a member of the Whitman School Committee on a three-year term is only into it for a year and a half, and election's on for another six to eight months. Is there a way that the Boards of Selectment and this sitting Whitman-Elected School Committee can appoint somebody until the next round of elections?
It's further along.
There you go. You're reading my mind.
Further along, Dean. We've done it.
That's right.
That's why I'm going, because I didn't.
We've made a couple of adjustments since we sent this to you. So, this one, hopefully, you can follow along. It'll be more clear next week when you, next time we meet. So, C should say, "Each member of the committee shall have one vote, and each vote shall be of equal weight." Period. And then, I'm going to cross off the rest of those four lines and continue with what is listed in your list as D below. So, D will all come up under C, and we'll continue to say, "The committee will review the makeup of the committee every 10th year following publication of the Decennial Federal Census, and every five years in between based on official state census figures. The committee will adjust the representation, if necessary, to reflect the relative town populations as near as practical, but within a 10% range as required by the one-person-one-vote principle." So, for example, if for some reason the population shifts and it's 50-50 instead of 60-40, then this, without having to redo this regional agreement, it would still be your same 10 members, but there would be five equal votes from each of the two towns instead of six and four. If it became something more unique than that, you could go to weighted votes. For example, a lot of systems have done that, especially if you wanted to keep four members from the smaller town, for example. Let's say that your smaller town got even smaller, and it should be 80-20 as an example. But you wanted to have still four representatives from that town that has, should only have two. You could still have four representatives, but you would have to give them a less weight. Or maybe the bigger town, they get 1.2 votes, and smaller town gets only one vote or 1.8 or something like that.
It's like Plymouth County.
But this gives you some flexibility so that you don't have to redo the regional agreement if that changes.
Fred?
The one thing I don't see here is, and let's say you get to a point where the population shifts. How is it determined who goes? Let's say you're going by the one vote.
Oh, yeah.
And you're keeping it, it's, you know, 6-4. Hanson's population diminishes, and now it's going to be 7 to 3. How do you decide who that fourth person is?
Person up for election?
That loses the seat.
You would, go ahead. I have that answer, but go ahead.
Go ahead.
You would do that at the next election after the person's term ran and ran out?
Okay. So, I would assume it would be done at the time of town election anyways?
Right.
So.
So, it was the person that would be up that, you have to be up that year after we run, that position would be eliminated?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Because that's what we're doing with the Board of Health, I mean, the Planning Board in Whitman.
Though if it swung by two and a three-year term, right, you wouldn't necessarily have two seats up, right?
Right. You might only have one up.
There's really no language to discuss how that would happen.
Unless we do it one one year and one the next year.
Well, it would be one person, one vote, and under one person, one vote, if you read that, it states, it would, what would happen? Say you had two seats up.
Still have to be run.
And three people would be now running for one seat.
But if you only had one seat up.
If it was other than 10.
If you only had one term expiring, and you needed to get rid of two, how do you make the decision? Is it the next one in line that?
That I don't, I don't know.
Actually, like, thinking about this, that isn't an issue. Your agreement says you're going to have 10 school committee members. That's not going to change. If it gets to, the proportion gets off, you're going to have to wait the votes or redo the regional agreement.
Right.
Okay. So, it's going to stay at 10 no matter what?
Right.
And now, it's just going to be what, what weight does a vote carry?
Right. Or you would go to 5 and 5 in that first year and wait the vote.
You can't. You have to keep it at 10 committee members.
Right. But you could go, you could move.
Well, you could move one over to the other town, too.
Right. As I think we might have mentioned, there are five ways that you can elect school committee members, and we have some copies here if you'd like to take those at some point, but obviously, you don't have to do that at this point. But, so that will, this will allow you to do that. And the other thing I should just mention here that you don't have to do, you have to do it every 10 years based on the federal census. Most committees choose to look at it every five years based on the five years in between those federal census and base it on the state census that they have done for your communities. So, I guess I should ask you if that's what you'd like to do, have, look at it every five years or wait for 10 years to decide if it's out of balance?
You really think it's going to change that quick?
I don't see any giant changes in either one of these towns.
Aye.
No. But the other thing, too, is, should we include an example in there? And I'm assuming that you're saying the higher, lower, average. So, if Whitman dipped below 55%, you know, now you might be talking 5 and 5. Or, you know, vice versa, if it ended up over, it's over 65%. Now, it's already carried over to the next level, so to speak. Should we include an example in that language, just to keep it crystal clear?
I see several heads going in different directions. I get nervous about putting numbers in the document.
Yeah. Chris?
So, if you're going to do examples, I think it's going to, I'd just be concerned it's going to snowball into lots of examples. So, I think we should just, so I think you're, I like where you're going. So, we should just clarify the language. So, rounded to the, you know, we'll just use regular rounding rules, right? So, rounded to the nearest.
Well, the state is saying we have to do it to the nearest 10.
There you go. So, we're covered, right? Nearest town says nearest town.
Pretty much spelled out.
Forty-five, 54.9, nearest town says 50, right?
Right.
But I think the how and the when, going back to where we were just in the conversation, I don't know. I feel like we should spend some time and maybe try and spell that out a little bit, how the committee and how we would decide who's off and who's on and when.
Again, nobody's going off, the committee.
You have 10 members.
You just might have a different amount of vote.
Well, you.
There won't be any change. You're still going to have to have 10 school committee members.
Right. But one person from Hanson could leave, and you could add a spot, right? In Whitman or vice versa.
Right. Isn't that how it would work?
I might be three years less than my term, and.
I don't think that's the intent. You could write it that way. The intent is to still keep.
Everyone for their term.
Actually, it says six members from Whitman and four members from Hanson, so the membership would stay the same. It would be the weight of the vote that would change.
Right.
Right. So, one person's vote from Hanson might be only counted as half.
Right.
Correct.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, I see what you're saying.
Nobody's going off, we're coming on.
I guess then, I would just say, I don't love the word "representation," right? So, if you're not really adjusting the representation, you're adjusting how we count the vote.
The voting.
Well, it's based on the representation of your town.
It's the power of the representation.
Yeah. I personally, I feel, I think of elected officials. If you're using that term "representation," I automatically say, we're going to shift the membership from.
One person, one vote.
Six-four to, you know, 7-3.
That's what I thought you meant, yeah.
My personal opinion would be, we should spell out that we're going to change the weighting of how the membership, you know, we're not changing the membership, but we're going to change the weighting.
Right. Because prior in the document, it says that the membership must be six from Whitman, four from Hanson. So, you can't change that.
Yeah. I mean, I guess.
So, you could take 70% and divide it over six members, and 30% over the four members, and that's the weight of each vote.
That's how you weight a vote.
From Whitman to Hanson. Because when we, when we discussed that first paragraph, kind of going back, I think what you had said, that leaves it open to change, but now we're saying here, we're not going to change that, we're going to change the weighting. And so, I guess I'd like either one paragraph to be shored up to say that, that membership will remain permanent, and then you adjust, adjust it over here by changing the weighting should the populations shift? Or you say that membership is, you know, open for.
Well, what the document says is that at the time that we're writing it, that's the representation. It doesn't say that that's going to be the representation forever.
No. It leaves it open.
Right.
It leaves it open, but then we're saying, if the population shifts, that's not what we're going to do. We're going to leave it permanent.
It doesn't, it doesn't leave it open. It requires you to review it every five and 10 years.
Right.
And if, if there's a change, you have to.
Oh, wait a sec.
Change the agreement.
Right. And see, that's what I'm trying to avoid, is changing the agreement.
Right.
That would be, you know, so now, we have a population shift, we have to change the agreement. It's going to go back to school committee. It's going to go back to the.
The whole process.
By the time it's voted, the population might shift back the other way.
Could change again.
So, we probably could write something that would say that the membership, as long as it stays at 10, the membership could change. I guess we could write it that way if that's what the committee wants.
That's a discussion.
I think the, I think what you would say is, the membership wouldn't change without an adjustment to this agreement, right? You're almost making a recommendation in the next paragraph of what to do if the population changes, and that, that recommendation is to go to a weighted vote. You don't have to spell out how you would do it, where you would just say, you know, based on, I don't know, based on state census figures or based on.
It sort of spells it out with the 10% range is required by the one-person-one-vote principle. You'd have to come up with a clear 10%. If you were in the middle, it doesn't change it. If you're at 8%, it doesn't change it. It's, it's got to be 10 or more in order to change the vote. And if that happens in either town, I'll be shocked. But I, I understand it needs to be, but it's kind of spells it out, within the 10% range is required by the one-person-one-vote law. That kind of spelled, spells that out. If you're at 9.6, we're not at 10.
Well, it spells out you have to make a change, right? It spells out that you have to make a change, but one paragraph, we're saying, based on the population today, it's 6-4. That leads me to say, all right, if I'm reading this agreement, if that population goes to 70-30, then I expect the membership to change.
Right. Seven for the town for 70.
It's not clear to me, yeah.
For 70 and three for the town for 30.
Right. Or it could go the other way. It could be 5-5.
Yeah. Right. Exactly right.
But it wouldn't even go to 70, it would go to 65.
Which way the document leads you to go.
Right. And then, then you need wording of how you add and eliminate representatives. You know, if you lose one, it's the one that is up for election is zeroed out, and that person would have to either challenge somebody that, if there's two up for election.
And if there's two, and if there's two up for election, one of the seats is gone, and it's two.
And the two can go after that one seat, right?
Right.
And that's if they both decide to run for reelection.
Exactly. And then, if you have to add one, you just add one for the other town, and the person runs for it.
Right.
Yeah. That would be simpler. And it'd be also simpler when you're doing election, when you're doing voting on issues. I know, like, at Plymouth County, I'm worth, I think, 1.6, where Brockton's worth, you know, 10-point something or 20-point something. So, it's like, takes, you know, eight Whitmans to make one Brockton, you know, depends on the population. And they have to sit down and add it all up to see how the vote goes. This way, one person, one person, one vote. It's so simple.
As we're thinking about this, this is a little bit unusual, but I, I don't think that number one does say specifically it has to stay at 10.
It doesn't. It doesn't. I reread.
So, I think that was the intent of this, but it doesn't have to say that. So, I guess my, one of the questions that you need to answer is.
This is just the first paragraph.
A lot of communities, the smaller community always wants to feel like that they have voices at the table, even if they don't have the same votes. So, the question that, we can write whatever you, you want, but if, if the population ever went to 80-20, would, would the smaller town be okay with having only two school committee members there and have one full vote? Or would they, would they rather have four people at the table, each with a half a vote so that they have a voice, more voices there? So.
Interesting thought.
I think you'd wait the vote, like we talked about, so you'd have four, at least four people from one and six from the other.
Yeah. I guess, I guess all we're saying, right, is neither of these paragraphs spells out what to do. It leaves it open to do it either way. And do we want to.[1598.62]
Well, we, we could add, the process of the vote would be weighted.
We could say, if the, if the town populations become more disparate than ten percent difference, the votes would be weighted. I mean, that would lock you into a process, a system. If that's what you wanna do, that's, you can do that, obviously.
Discussion.
I mean, it's the same net result. I mean, let's face it, over the past twenty-something years, the populations always stayed within this realm anyways. I don't really see a change.
I always thought Hanson would grow.
Yeah, I mean, we've been growing, Whitman.
Yeah, I thought it would be the opposite.
You know, so, I mean, even if Hanson starts to grow and Whitman diminishes, I mean, you're looking at a four percent swing right now, but you're talking populations. See, that, that's the number I don't have off the top of my head.
Hanson's is forty-one point three percent right now, and Whitman's is fifty-eight point seven.
Based upon enrollment?
No, based on the pop.
I always thought it was enrollment.
That's the fun part.
Based on the twenty.
Okay, so.
It's really not too far off. Twenty-ten census gives you twenty-four thousand, six hundred ninety-eight people, and it's a forty-one point three percenter Hanson and fifty-eight point sevener Whitman.
They round up.
As of twenty-ten.
So it's pretty close to the.
Pretty close to.
To the enrollment.
To the student enrollment, it is. Very close.
You'd have to have a giant change. I'm not having any more kids.
I mean, I think, I think if you had that big of a change, you're probably amending this agreement again anyway.
Right.
Right, so, so putting in language that says you'd wait the vote pursuant to any, any shift, I think is fine. And then you're locked into waiting it, and then if there's a three, two or three-person swing, again, you're probably, you're opening this document back up.
Twenty years from now, let's hope that someone remembers that.
So, we'll draft something that says that, that if it goes beyond the ten percent, we would go to weighted vote, so that you keep the same ten school committee members, right?
Yep.
And then the other, the other question is, what, what did you just say?
Well, if they go with the every five years in between, I mean, nothing's gonna change in five years.
Or you'd at least see, you might change one at a time, right? So you'd have to deal with it.
Yeah, you have to deal with it every five years.
Yeah, you'd see it coming.
And then it would give you some time to plan, I guess.
You could see it coming.
So is that okay? Do you wanna keep the five years look up?
Do we have any history on this, the, the fluctuation?
Yeah, it hasn't changed.
Not at all.
It hasn't changed.
It's been sixty, forty.
Yeah.
All the way along, since this was started.
In existence.
Nineteen ninety-two.
Ninety-two?
Yeah.
Ninety-two.
That was the last document review.
It's not gonna change in the next four years.
And this document's good for twenty years, right?
Yeah, we're okay.
Yeah, I, I think we're kind of beating a dead horse.
Okay, we'll, we'll draft something, you can look at it next time.
Okay.
So when you get ready to vote at the end of this section, we'll keep that aside.
Okay.
So, number two, no change about your quorum, just the majority. Number three, we crossed out the bottom four lines because it's just too specific. Again, as someone said here already, we should make this general enough that we'll, that's, we'll be able to be used for a long time, and we only need it to be specific in some specific cases, so. All the business about section sixteen to one sixty-one, that could change in chapter seventy-one, so it's not, we don't think that's necessary. Number four, we just deleted, oh, I'm supposed to be reading this, I'm sorry, I forgot. Number four, it says, "At the first regular meeting of the committee," and we're crossing out, "following the nineteen ninety-two district election, and thereafter at the first regular meeting," because it's not relevant anymore. "To be held after each district election, the committee shall organize and choose by ballot," and by the way, that's the only time that the school committee can vote by secret ballot, is the chairperson of the committee. Otherwise, there's no such thing as a secret ballot by the school committee. Organize and choose by ballot, a chairperson and a vice-chairperson from its own membership. At the same meeting or at any other meeting, the committee shall appoint a treasurer and secretary, who may be the same person, but who need not be members of the committee, to the time and place for its regular meetings, and provide for the calling of special district meetings. The chairperson will appoint members to serve on subcommittees annually. Question there?
Should that, when you say "committee shall organize," should it be, since we're already organized, should it be reorganized, or stay what it organized? I don't know if that's not important, but, you know.
Either way, it's all right. Any other?
How do we define district again? Can you say, go back, how do we define the word "district"?
Is your pre-K to twelve regional school district?
Hearing referred to as district.
Yeah, so district, it's not the district election, it's not the, it's a town election, correct? Number four, district, town, D.
Yeah, you could add district, town election.
Correct? PK through twelve is not electing the school committee members, right?
Well, I think that just means, I, you have a good point there, but it means the election that relates to the district.
School committee.
Yeah.
So the town elec, but it's the town elections we're talking about, right?
Right.
School committee members are elected at the first regularly, oh, I see what you're saying.
The district election within the town.
The committee will be held after each.
District election.
It's an election for the district.
After each town election.
It's town election.
Just makes it sound easier.
Town, district election, yeah.
It's an election for the district.
Right.
Okay, yeah, okay.
It's not every town election.
Okay, I, I don't know if you need me to read the whole next couple of pages.
No, you don't need to.
About the interim committee.
It's deleting the language.
Number, number three, if these were being sticklers, are you replacing, we have Massachusetts general law, are you replacing that with MGL?
Yeah, I did that, but I just didn't.
Okay, yeah, in our copy, it was different, I just.
You'll see it next time.
Yeah.
So, we moved all the way down to D vacancies? And this is the answer to your question about if someone leaves their post in the middle of year. If a vacancy occurs among the members elected under subsections one B and one C, acting jointly, the selectmen and the remaining committee members from the town concerned shall, within thirty days, appoint a member to serve until the next election, at which time a successor shall be elected to serve with the balance of the unexpired term, if any.
Perfect, perfect. We've only done it once in fifteen years I've been on the committee, it wasn't here. That's exactly how we did it.
So how did that work, just real, I don't wanna hold it up, so how would that work?
Okay, let's say.
Selectmen and the committee members.
The selectmen and the committee members remaining from that town only.
Yep.
So let's say we had five people that wanted to sit on that seat until the next election was gonna come up. The selectmen and the remaining committee members, say it was Hanson, there'd be three members remaining, would make that choice. That person would sit there until the next election comes up, and then she, here, she could run against anyone that might want that seat. But it's that town only.
So those eight, in that case, those seven, eight members, eight members would make the election of that replacement?
Well, and it'd only be the specific, like I say, it was.
Five selectmen plus three school committee members.
Right, Hanson, okay? And if it was Whitman, it'd be five selectmen and five school committee members. Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
E under organization.
Why, twice? Didn't we just talk about organization?
Yes, we did, I don't know, I just realized that myself.
See, I like the way this is working, following the latest town election to be held.
Yes, we, that duplicated.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll correct that next time, obviously.
Different language, too.
Can we try and use that, "Following the latest town election" language?
Pardon me?
Can we use that, "Following the latest town election" language? That was where I was getting caught up in the word "district."
Second paragraph, the second phrase, use that. Following the latest town election. He just wants to use it.
Yep.
Yep. What's that dinging noise?
Now, what is that noise?
That's the vacuum cleaner, it's jammed in a corner somewhere. It's way down the corner.
He, it's live.
I can hear it. I don't know what it is.
There's no language as far as the vice chair in there as well, where there was in the other paragraph.
So we'll stick with the other languages.
We'll, we'll put them together to make sure it's inclusive.
Okay.
So, if you'd like to take a vote on section one, with the, leaving out the, where we're gonna revise about the, the ten school committee members and how that's gonna be worked.
Can we table?
Right, I think we gotta wait and see what the final.
Table that until we see all the language, okay?
I hate to vote on something that we're not actually reading.
Correct. And waiting for revisions in two paragraphs out of, you know, five.
Really, there's only two that we could, right, number two and number three.
But I mean. Then we're, we're gonna go through it anyway and vote it, and then we'll vote the whole document. So we're good.
Section two, type of regional school district. Currently, it says, "The regional school district shall include," and we're recommending crossing out, "the elementary grades, pre-kindergarten through eight, and senior high school, consisting of grades nine through twelve," because that's already happened. So I would read, "The regional school district shall include all grades pre-K through twelve."
Yep.
"The committee shall have the right to establish adult evening education courses. The committee is hereby authorized, in its discretion, to establish and maintain," and I'll go back and read the stricken part. If you look down in the red, it should be a small A, "all required or authorized," cross out "all," "educational programs or offerings," but not limited to vocational programs under MGL, chapter seventy-four. So, let me go back and read that, the way it might read. "Regional school district shall include all grades pre-K through twelve," well, period. "The committee shall have the right to establish adult evening education courses," period. "The committee is hereby authorized, in its discretion, to establish and maintain all required or authorized educational programs or offerings, including but not limited to vocational programs under MGL, chapter seventy-four." And the part that we're recommending crossing out, so, "The committee is hereby authorized, in its discretion, to establish and maintain stated, state, it should be stated-aided vocational education, acting as trustees therefore, in accordance with the provisions of chapter seventy-four of the general laws and acts amendatory thereof, in addition thereto, or dependent thereon, and any other special educational classes, in accordance with the provisions of the general laws and acts amendatory thereof, in addition thereto, or dependent thereon." That's a mouthful.
Crossing out.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
I'm a little confused as to what is authorized. Who authorized what in this language?
Committee. "The regional school district shall include, the committee shall have the right to establish," so it's the committee.
That did what? Authorized an action and therefore their.
Yeah, it was, you have the right to establish adult education courses and any other educational programs that are allowed by, by law. So it's pretty general.
In its discretion.
So the authorized programs are auth, are those authorized by laws?
Are those authorized by this committee, by the school committee?
No, I think it's all those authorized by Mass. general laws, right?
Right.
Yes.
And a question. Chapter seventy-four. Yeah, the vocational program on the chapter seventy-four, is that gonna be just the evening classes?
No, that, no, it could be, could be during your school day. That's vocational education.
So aren't you stepping on South Shore Vtech's toes, doing that? Well, we already have a vocational system, dealing with Whitman and Hanson?
We have vocational programs.
I know you have, you have culinary arts and things like that, but I mean, you know.
You probably don't have something that's under chapter seventy-four.
We don't.
But it says the law allows you to.
You could.
And you're stepping on South Shore, but.
But we used to have a shop program, we used to have those, and they were part of that, but we don't have them now, but if we were to decide we wanted to do that again.
Well, we're not part of it now, is when we joined South Shore.
But even when we were part of South Shore Vtech, we had programs.
Did you?
Yeah, we sure did. We just got rid of those, 'cause we just, when we built this high school, it didn't have any place for them. But if we wanted to say, do our culinary program as one of those programs, we could.
Okay.
So, we're just.
Can I answer your question, Jim?
Yeah, it's an interesting circle.
It's just trying to say that you could do.
Whatever you want.
Whatever the law allows you to do, and you don't wanna start listing all the things you can't do.
Right.
Motion to approve section two as read and redacted.
Somebody gonna second it?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Discussion? Are we gonna wait till we see the actual changes before we vote on it, or are you just? We're gonna vote the whole document, Danny, we're gonna go over it again, but, so we know what we've done and what we haven't done. Okay. Then you're gonna see it written, and we'll vote, we'll go over the whole thing and vote it again, and then vote it as a document? Right. All right, so we're voting, so we're actually, we're voting to change.
Yes.
The amendment, that one's right here, it's all amended. Any other questions?
So, you're voting to approve section two as amended, period.
Okay.
Right now.
Right. All those in favor? Okay, section three.
Okay, regional school district, we have a couple of questions here. "Pupils in grades nine through twelve shall attend the Whitman-Hanson Regional School District High School located within the district." And it currently says, "Off Franklin Street in the town of Hanson, the present Whitman-Hanson Regional High School." We're asking you if you think it needs to be that specific. Hard to believe with this beautiful school, that any time in the next fifty years, you'll, this building will move, but, so, that's up to you whether you want that in there or not. "Pupils in pre-kindergarten through eight shall attend schools located in their towns of residence," and it says now, "except pupils in special education classes who shall attend schools as designated by the committee," and two, "pupils enrolled in specialized educational programs." And it already says at the end of your current agreement, "on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and by vote of the committee." So, what we are finding in other places is that we don't need to be so specific as saying it's only special education. There could be other reasons why you would want a grade, there is something later, it says that if a school burned down, for example, the committee could say the kids from one town could go to school in another town.
It's all one region.
There may be other reasons that you would want that, not have, have it be so specific. So kids could, the way we have it written here, is kids could go to a different town on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools and by vote of the committee, which is already, that part is part of your language now.
I don't think that the vote of the committee should be something necessary, that the superintendent on an individual basis.
I, I disagree with you, because it's about paying taxes, so if you're paying taxes to go to Whitman schools or to Hanson schools, and if we're making an exception, I think the school committee probably does need to support the superintendent in that.
Well, I would think support the superintendent, but the superintendent should, but how do we do that and bring up a pupil's name and a circumstance?
You don't.
You probably wouldn't, but I'm thinking if a school closed or something like that, and you absolutely had to do that, that would be a circumstance where you'd want the committee to vote.
Okay, I'm thinking of more the individual.
Yeah, that's always different, I mean, yeah, that's more.
That, that's what I'm, that's how I'm looking at it.
But the other piece is, the preschool is gonna be here at the high school, so you'd really wanna be a little more vague as to where the preschool is located, I would say.
But that's, again, the recommendation of the superintendent.
True, but I mean.
Right.
Saying that's where we're gonna have the preschool, and that's a logical thing, and I would assume the committee would support that.
It may not always be here. Well, it would, it would also cover ODPs, out-of-district placements, that save the district money in a specific area that we can handle. The superintendent recommends that we do an ODP, and then the school committee votes it for, for the support. You know, it's, it's just a double.
Yeah, but is that, is that a placement, or is that because we don't offer a program?
Well, it could be either way. Right. Could be, truthfully, 'cause we don't offer the program, or because it makes more sense to have it out of, out of district.
Generally, there's.
Yeah, but you would eliminate, I guess my point is you would be eliminating the program, right? And then you'd have to send the kids out of district. And to me, that's a little bit different than what the language here intending, which is, right, kids in Whitman go to Whitman schools up until high school, kids in Hanson go to Hanson schools up until high school. I think we all recognize we have to have a vehicle to make exceptions to that rule, 'cause it doesn't make sense necessarily to have two preschool programs, or.
Right, we're doing that now.
Right, we are.
Or two specialized learnings.
If you have specialized education with some of it, it works into the sped program to where it might affect it, where you have to have that going on.
Yeah, I guess, let me, let me just ask your question to, to, or maybe let me ask Ruth. If we offer the program, do we have to house that kid here? So in the case of an ODP, right, if we offer it here, do we have to house that kid here? Or do we have to eliminate the program to be able to send them outside the district? Or make a determination that our program doesn't meet their needs, right? So I guess, I guess, I don't think that's, my personal opinion is that those situations aren't covered under that language. I think what we're truly talking about here is exceptions to the, Whitman kids go to Whitman, Hanson kids go to Hanson until they get to high school, right?
In general, that's what happens.
Right, but it'll cover all of it.
But there are exceptions.
If you have the superintendent of schools and the committee voting.
Committee voting on it, yeah.
It covers it all. I think.
So, this, this, end of the next paragraph you'll see is another old issue. In addition, if a school described in subsection three B should become unusable because of damage or other cause, a committee may vote to use a school in the other town on a temporary emergency basis until facilities become available in the town of residence of the pupils. And we are recommending you eliminate this last paragraph, for those of us who've been school administrators, especially, I guess. Parents desiring special placement in a school other than the town of residence may request approval from the superintendent and the school committee. Obviously, any parent can come to the superintendent and the school committee and ask for an exception to something. But putting it in here kind of generates interest in people saying, I'd like to have my, my Hanson child go to Whitman, I like the teacher over there better. And I don't think you ought to encourage that.
No, it wouldn't be.
But they are better in Whitman.
Well, so just one question. Right, there's no, so, in the event a school burns down, there's no timeframe here about...
Temporary.
How long, right? It says temporary, but town decides not to rebuild a school, and now it's ten years, right? How do you handle that?
Well, that town will still be paying their assessment based on the number of kids they have, wherever they are.
Right. Now, who, what school are in, it's the assessment.
But the town, the individual towns, now we get into capital costs, right? The individual towns are responsible for the capital cost of their buildings. So, if you're living in Whitman, and you got Hanson schools at the, you know, Hanson kids in the Whitman Middle School, and you need to replace that roof...
And half of the kids are Hanson, half of the kids are Whitman, I see where you're going.
I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there.
No, I see where you're going.
It's going to happen, but there's, it leaves us in a tough situation if things aren't moving fast enough.
If a building were to, God forbid, burn down, it would be insured. So, the funds would be there to rebuild.
It'd also be there to temporarily house if you had to.
Yeah. Yeah. Portables and whatnot.
So this, I think, would be on a basis of common sense impact of, you know. I, I agree with you.
I'm asking the question.
We're plugging, all questions are great, I think.
And I would think that the first line of defense within a town would be, obviously, you'd be looking at double sessions.
Yeah.
So, would be to put one of their existing school structures into the double sessions instead of the opposite town, I would think.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
That's where you have school committee members to do.
Okay, moving on.
Yeah.
B, lease of the present schools. And again, we've talked about, talking about the leases at some point later, not focusing on those tonight, but at least just the language that's in here. Town of Whitman and the town of Hanson are each hereby authorized to lease to the regional school district buildings, facilities, grounds, equipment, and educational materials presently used by the member towns for school purposes as herein after listed. Each lease shall be for a term of twenty years, and the term shall commence on the date when the committee assumes jurisdiction over the pupils in all grades of the district. There are two issues there. Crossed out presently used by the member towns, because those, your, your elementary schools have changed over time. So, it's not just those that are presently used, it's, it's, it's leasing of any of the schools that would be in either of your towns to the district. So, that's, that makes sense. And the last part, deleting that, because the school committee has already assumed jurisdiction over all grades, so it's just redundant.
Fred. Wasn't it a fifty-year lease, and didn't it have to get approved through the House of Representatives in the Senate and signed by the governor?
This is...
I mean, this says twenty, but I could have sworn it was a fifty-year, and...
This is the original document, so...
That was the initial?
The, the law states that twenty years is the maximum.
Right, but we, we got a waiver.
There have been places that got waivers, maybe you're one of them, to do it longer than that.
We were, and I just don't know where we stand right now on that.
It was done, they had to be fixed when the law changed.
But the law does not allow more than twenty years unless you get this...
We, I, I know we got that waiver.
We're positive.
This would be going forward for any, any additional leases that we put in place, I assume, right? So, anything that's already done is done, and...
Right.
Or if a term came due, I guess. Right. And if the state decided to change the term to ten years, it doesn't matter what the district, what the agreement says, we'd only be able to do it for time at the State House anyway, so...
Unless you get that waiver.
Well, that's what, yeah, unless you...
Would you like me to read the next paragraph, or are no changes there? I'm happy to, if you think...
No, you're good.
Okay. The leases may contain provisions for extension in accordance with the provisions under MGL section fourteen C of chapter seventy-one, as amended. The town of Whitman and the town of Hanson shall receive no rental for the leases. The leases shall contain provisions authorizing the district to repair and make minor improvements or alterations to the buildings or any part thereof. The district shall pay all expenses of maintaining and operating the buildings and keeping them in good repair during the terms of the leases. A committee shall also be authorized to make major improvements, alterations, additions, or capital expenditures to town-owned schools, but only after notification of the appropriate member town's board of selectmen and after approval at a town meeting of that member town. Capital improvements for elementary buildings in either town must be approved by the voters of said town. Capital improvements will be submitted to the selectmen in the form of an article. Approved articles will not be a part of the regional school budget. Nothing contained in the leases shall prevent the committee from permitting the use of the buildings or premises by the town of Whitman or the town of Hanson. Moving on, each lease involving a member town shall be on such other terms as may be determined by the selectmen thereof and the committee, who shall execute the lease for them, for them, for the, probably should be the, member town, and the regional school district respectively. The regional school district shall ensure at its expense the buildings so leased. Details of such insurance shall be determined by the committee after consultation with selectmen of the town owning the buildings. Now, here's the next question, because you want the, the names of your schools listed, as we've talked about they're changing. They've changed since this was written in ninety-two, and apparently one is changing even as we speak. So that's up to you. We can list the ones that are currently in use, or, or not.
What's the advantage or disadvantage, Mac, to putting the school buildings, we know what they are? Other than this, this document is so out of date. I mean, it lists Frankie Holt's been gone.
Clothell Building.
Clothell's been gone, Clothell Building's been gone, Clothell Building used to be administrative building.
Celeb.
It's gone. I mean, is it assumed that all schools in the district that we use?
Right.
We know of.
That's kind of the way it starts. If the towns are hereby authorized to lease to the regional school district the buildings, facilities, and equipment and education materials, and each lease shall be for twenty years. So, you have individual leases that can control those situations, though.
I don't know, it might make sense that you, that you name the name of the school and what town they're in, so it spells out...
Why?
Huh?
Why?
So, Hanson's not paying for Whitman schools, and Whitman's not paying for Hanson schools. It spells it out, which is...
That's already taken care of.
Controlled by the lease.
Yeah.
Not the regional agreement, right? So, I think you're better off...
Yeah, it's independently controlled by a lease.
Yeah.
The lease is going to spell out the name, and that way you don't have to change the whole document.
Because things change, names of buildings change.
Yeah.
Does the lease contain some sort of differentiation between a capital improvement and a minor repair or improvement?
Steve is reading the lease law. Your leases, as we said, are the most complicated leases we've ever seen, they're about ten or twelve pages long.
I don't think they do, no. I mean, if they...
At some point, do we know, yes, we do need, please, to be able to differentiate, at what point does a improvement become a capital improvement?
Need a dollar a month.
Yeah. Our, our definition of capital improvement...
Or longevity amount of the repair.
Years of use, or...
That's what, the lifespan of the...
Yeah, lifespan of the improvement.
When we get to talking about...
Apportionment.
Apportionment and debt, we'll, I think we'll address that in the regional agreement. We're not going to deal with that tonight, but there's another section of the agreement that will talk about when something's called capital. There's a definition of capital already in the agreement.
Okay.
So, question we have over here is, it says capital improvements for elementary buildings, it doesn't specify...
Middle.
Any of the other buildings. And I remember seeing that in the old agreement, and, I mean, and wondering why that is.
Improvement of, for, why don't you say for buildings, or for, whatever?
Who are you talking about?
Third line down, page six at the top.
Because the capital improvements for elementary schools, according to this, only have to be approved by that one town. Anything for the high school has to be approved by that one town.
Middle schools.
Are you calling middle schools elementary? That's what we're saying.
Oh.
The original document had it go K to eight for elementary, but I think we probably ought to just say...
Okay.
Elementary and middle schools.
Buildings.
Would you say free K to eight? Or would you say free K to eight?
You could say K to eight, yep.
Free K to eight.
Well, K to eight.
But, you know, then if, if we change configurations, that could be a problem. I'd probably say elementary and middle school buildings.
Because suppose we move the eighth grade to the high school at one point? I'm not saying, wait, Stella's gonna be watching.
But you never know with enrollment shifts what might happen.
Right, exactly, it could.
A lot of towns are doing that.
I think it's very wise to keep the word buildings in there, because technically you have a fifth grade, which is an elementary grade, and it Hanson middle next year.
Right.
So...
So I would just say elementary and middle...
Buildings.
Middle, middle school buildings.
Buildings.
Yep.
Dave? As you see in yellow, I just made a, I made a note there saying that we'll talk about the capital and debt process at another time. That's one of the funny conversations. Each lease involving a member town shall be on such other terms as may be determined by the selectmen thereof and the committee who shall execute. Did I read that already? Sorry. What?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, we got down to the schools, and did, did we agree?
We don't need...
Including the schools or no?
No.
No?
No.
No.
Yeah.
And C, termination of leases in the event of the withdrawal of a member town from the district. The leases mentioned in subsection three B shall be terminated at the time of such withdrawal. So, with the, with the changes noted?
And we did find a document from nineteen ninety-eight that lists the fifty-year lease.
They did.
So there was a revision of the...
But that was never approved.
It was never approved. Didn't that go through the State House, though?
No.
I thought that went, and was...
I don't think so.
One of the reasons we're doing this.
Things were only approved in one town and not the other. So, the changes that happened then were unilateral, and they never went to the state.
Least that we could find, anyway.
Well, the state has no record of it at all.
They don't?
That's why we're doing this.
Okay.
No, their last record is, their last record is this document.
We reviewed the document back in the early nineties.
We probably voted it, but it never went anywhere.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm talking, in the State, in the State House.
Yeah.
It is approved.
Well, I'm just thinking about...
The document they have is the name.
About our process. I'm wondering if, instead of voting tonight on what you all think we're changing, we should get a consensus, hopefully, and then we bring it back and have you look at the...
That's fine.
I think that makes very...
That's what I was talking about, yeah.
That's fine.
And then, yeah, so, just make sure that we understand...
Yeah.
What the consensus is, and we'll try to...
That's okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, we're going to skip section four on apportionment and payment of costs, because we're going to deal with that at a later time.
Just, um, sorry, going back to C, should it be at the effective day, of such withdrawal?
Where are you?
Going back to the termination of leases?
Oh.
At the...
Right, it should be upon the effective date of the withdrawal, right? Because the town's going to decide to withdraw, if they ever did. There'll be a, there'll be a period there, the lease needs to remain in effect until the effective date of the withdrawal, right?
At least, right, school ending or something. At the end of that, he has school.
It's the effective date, right, it would be the legal.
Yeah, got it. Okay. Section five, transportation. Couple of questions for you here. School transportation shall be, shall be provided by the regional school district. Now, we have pulled from other, other documents that we have, something more specific about how this is calculated. Your current agreement just talks about it, and it, you'll see the first line under, the blue crossed out, it says, and the cost thereof shall be apportioned to the member towns as an operating cost. So...
Section five.
Page nine, the bottom.
Page ten, oh, at nine.
On the top of page ten.
Bottom of nine.
Skipping over the, skipping over the debt process.
I was waiting for her to tell me where it was.
Okay, so what we've inserted, the cost of pupil transportation shall be determined by dividing the total cost of transportation minus the estimated chapter seventy-one transportation reimbursement by the ratio of each member town's enrollment as of October one to the sum of the member town's enrollments as of October, October one of the immediately preceding year in which the costs are to be assessed. So, it's basically just saying you take the total cost, subtract what you're going to get for reimbursement, and divide that based on their enrollment.
You forgot subject to appropriation.
Which is basically what you're doing now, I would assume, is that right, Christine?
No, what we do is, it's based on how the students be on one and a half miles, whether it's mandated and non-mandated.
Okay, well, that's, yeah.
So overall, the transportation is reduced of, of the operating cost, but then they get an additional cost based on versus mandated versus non-mandated busing.
Right, okay, so of the mandated, that's what you're doing. You're using the reimbursement and offsetting that.
The mandate, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Have a separate line after that.
I read this to you last time, this is the thing that I, I still think is backwards. It says, the regional school committee shall determine on an annual basis whether or not non-mandatory, non-mandated busing will be paid for by the regional school district. That's reasonable. If the regional committee decides not to provide non-mandated busing, an article will be present to the selectmen's office of each town for approval by the voters. Again, I, I think that doesn't make sense. That you wouldn't ask the towns to vote on, if you don't provide non-mandated busing. You would ask them to approve if there was, you were giving non-mandated busing.
You were asking them to pay outside of the regional school district budget. That's what they, that's what we do.
Yeah.
Right. Right, there's, they'll, they'll send us an amount of money that it's going to cost for non-mandated busing. And it's in a line item in our, in our town warrant, and I think Hanson's the same way, right?
That's right.
And we vote on that line item budget. Say it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll say. Then the money is transferred to the school department, and they do the busing.
Is that what you want to continue doing?
Yes.
Yes, we're...
So, we need to rewrite this last sentence, so it says that anything, if you, if the school committee wants to provide non-mand, non-mandated busing, it'll go to the town for a vote.
Does the school decide that, or does the town decide that?
For so many years, what it's been is the town just pays it.
Yeah, we just pay it.
We're not really doing that, we have this annual decision as to whether we're going to give the bill to the towns. We just give the bill to the town.
I know.
Right.
Right.
But I mean...
Though there was serious consideration, I think.
But that would really come from the town.
Right.
Decide whether they want to pay or not.
But I guess, right, so the, the, the process that happens today is the school committee actually decides to provide the non-mandated busing...
Or not to provide it.
At, no, to provide it, because they're the ones who, who enter into the contract, but it's funded through, it's, it's not, right? It's, it's funded outside of the regional school district's budget. It's funded via, by the town.
In actuality, the towns decide that they want to provide non-mandated busing.
That's more the action.
Is the town, is the, is the town, is a part, is the town entering into a separate contract with the busing company? Or the district?
No, the district ends up providing the services.
But they, but if they choose not to pay for it, we would just provide mandated busing.
For instance.
Right, but I guess legally, the district is providing the non-mandated busing. It's just how it's getting funded, I think, is, is why it didn't make sense to you...
I think it's chicken and the egg.
From the way it was written.
Yeah.
Basically.
So, the bottom line...
It's kind of like also...
If the, if the school committee decides to provide it, now it's part of our operational budget, it's not separate. And we can't go up and above, and you may have one town decide to do something and another town decide not to. Whitman may say, you know something, we don't want to do non-mandated busing, we have, we have plenty of sidewalks. Hanson...
Has no sidewalks.
Not do it, because they don't have sidewalks.
You have that going on now, Fred. Whitman has crossing guards, Hanson doesn't.
Yeah.
Whitman pays for the crossing guards.
Yeah.
Out of a separate line item.
That's a separate line item.
Because they have a different situation where they have sidewalks and they have crossing guards because a bunch of kids walk. Hanson doesn't have that issue because they don't have sidewalks, so there are no crossing guards. So Whitman pays the crossing guards.
Non-mandated busing.
Outside of our bunch.
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
I would say the language is accurate the way it is.
It's cross eighteen.
The way it was, rather.
It isn't backwards?
Well, I guess that's...
It's to your point.
Well, so that's the question, right? We've been doing it this way, but should it require a vote by the committee to offer, right, every year, should we be... right, every year, should we be vote, should the school committee be voting to offer non-mandated busing to both towns pursuant to funding outside of the regional, right? Should that, should that be a vote that needs to be taken every year, to me, is really the question, are, are we doing it right to that?
Do you want to know why it was taken out of the budget?
Because it's three hundred thousand in Whitman and ninety thousand in Hanson.
No, no, I know that.
And you're not going to split, you're not going to split that sixty-fourty.
Right, and, and, and if, and I hate to say it, in the old days, if one town or the other, we'll say Whitman was saying, well, your assessment's crazy, it's too high, we can't afford it, and say, well, then we'll have to take non-mandated busing out. So, we say, well, no, we don't want that. Well, that's a decision. So, the town says, okay, we'll do, we'll pay for non-mandated ourselves. It was that simple. Now, and it's, and of course, the crossing guards are something that Whitman needs, but Hanson doesn't, so...
Because of sidewalks.
Right, why wouldn't we?
Yeah, but the whole thing is, if we vote for it in the committee, and I think by law, it's an assessment of the town, and it has to be in our regular operating budget.
I believe you can have exemptions if a member town has a different, the demographics in Whitman and Hanson are much different, and I think that's why the exemptions were made, Fred. Like I said...
Right, I think that's why we're doing it the way we're doing it.
Right.
And the town can do it on their own.
Yeah.
I see.
Yeah.
So, what are you saying, Steve?
My, my partner here is trying to help me see the light for what this wording means. It just didn't make sense to me, but I...
Oh, did he do something?
So, now, though, the question is, what, what do we want to do? Do we want to do anything, or no?
I would say leave the existing wording the way it was.
Unless we can come up with something that...
Well, it's, it's the school committee's responsibility to offer it, it's the town's responsibility whether or not they want it, is that what we're saying?
Well, I guess that's the, I, I guess, if, if you vote not to offer it...
We're putting it all on the town.
Fred, let me, let me ask you a question, if you vote not to offer it, how does the town provide the non-mandated busing?
We have to go out and do it ourselves.
They, they turn around, they fund it, they ask us what it would cost for, to provide the service to them.
But they fund it, they fund it through who? They fund it through the school. You're still providing the non-mandated busing.
They fund it through the, through their regular budget, through Article two.
Right. And under whose contract do they go out to the bus company with to get those buses?
They, they pay Whitman, Hanson, regional schools.
They pay.
You're still providing the busing.
No, 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 the same as they used to pay us for technical support, they used to pay us to do their IT.
It would bill us, yeah.
It's non-mandated because we do not have to offer the busing.
But you're offering it, right, I guess is my point, right?
Right.
Those students cover, if, when those students are on that bus, are they covered by the town's insurance, or are they covered by the school insurance? Are they...
Covered by the bus company's insurance.
Through the contract that the school committee has negotiated. See my point, right? The school is still offering non-mandated, and that's why I'm questioning whether we should, when we, when we vote that, when that's voted every year, whether that should be something that's called out by the school committee to say, we're offering non-mandated busing pursuant to funding outside of the region, right?
Oh, yeah, well, that's the way it is now.
But it's not a separate vote today.
That's not, it's not a separate vote. You're not really offering if you're not paying.
Right.
Right.
Offering it, but, right.
Subject to appropriation by the towns.
They decide if they want to offer it.
Yeah, right.
And then the towns can decide if they want to pay for it, right.
That's kind of what's going on now.
It's the same as when we were doing IT, it's a contract service that the school provides for the town.
How is that reflected in your, in your school committee budget?
It's not.
It's not.
That's a different story.
Oh, okay.
So, you really want to change the words provide and paid, and then I think it works.
Right.
I agree.
Shall determine on anybody's, whether it will be provided, and then it's, the second part will be, the region decides not to pay, then they pay. So, you want to switch the words.
Right, I, I think you just want to switch the words to say provide on...
Provide, and then...
Pursuant to funding outside the...
The operating budget.
The operating budget, right?
And who presents the article to the selectmen's office, which it says that the school committee votes not to do it, but then they ask the selectmen to pay for it?
Right, and they vote it separately every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a line item.
So, the school committee is, I, I guess this is where we're getting, the school committee is technically voting to provide it, subject to outside appropriation, right?
Right, it's exactly what it is.
I think that would be much more clear if you said something like that.
That's what it should say, yep.
That's fine.
Right, because that way you guys do all the arranging.
Right, it's over, the town doesn't have, so, 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 so next year, if Hanson's saying, we don't have ninety thousand dollars, and Whitman's saying, we don't have three hundred to meet the requirement, and the selectmen are saying, well, you know, we don't want to get rid of non, non-mandated busing, the school committee could technically say, we're not providing non-mandated busing, now you have the money, right? I mean, to your point, that's...
Now, who has the money?
The town.
We're talking about the assessment.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, yeah, if you just say, you know, pursuant to...
Town funding.
Outside appropriation, or, or, yeah.
Funding, right?
Which is how we're doing today.
How about just say the school committee on an annual basis will notify...
Shall assess the town.
Will notify the towns of the cost for non-mandated busing, for the towns to include in their town meeting, you know, to appropriate funding for such. You know, because we're always going to want to see non-mandated busing be on the table for kids.
But definitely.
Okay, and we're always going to be asking the towns to pay for it, so why not just say that we'll notify them on an annual basis what the cost is?
That's what we do now.
I know, but in other words, just...
But put it in here.
Put it in the agreement, so it just says that, period.
There's no circumstances in which the school committee would support it, though, right?
I don't see being able to.
Yeah.
And that was the, sort of, the decision made in the past.
Half a million bucks.
All right, well, we'll drop. You could just say, "Non-mandated busing will be provided pursuant to outside, you know, appropriation."
Appropriation by each member town.
Right?
Can you get it down to three words?